I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Theresa.
Hey, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Bowen.
Here.
Walslinger.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
And Brenneman and Dass are absent with notice.
All right, do we have any additions or approval or a motion for the approval of the minutes? Or, excuse me, the agenda?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Bowen.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Walslinger.
Yes.
All right, how about a motion or approval for approval of the minutes from the January 2nd meeting?
Make a motion to approve minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Not with vote. Walslinger.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
All right, bills for payment are in your packet.
Theresa, do you have an extra charger by chance?
An extra what?
Charger.
Computer charger.
Yeah, Mike.
Here, yeah.
Here's the kind of a difference.
Usually I look at that, but.
Yeah.
No, that's my. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, do we got a motion on the bills?
Motion to approve those as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? I see two had a question on municipal league. How's that dues figured? Is that just a, is that by population deal?
Pupulation, yeah.
Okay, and how about C-Cog same way?
Um, is it? Okay.
Okay, I was just curious. I didn't know how we figured, how they figured. I knew like with SMGA that that's how they figured that, so. All right, so the only questions I had. Anybody else got any comments or discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll vote. Bowen.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Walslinger.
Yes.
All right, public comments, anything that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to visitors first up. Lois and Deanna from Senior Citizens Center along with Helen.
Along with Helen, yep.
We'll have them all three come up, how's that? Now, they told me last week that they had what, two, two goods, one bad, uh...
No, I just said good, bad, and ugly.
Uh, some bad day.
Right.
You gave me a pretty warning, so.
I think that you went labeling by person.
Well, I think they were. I think, you should've seen the look that they gave you.
No evil, no evil.
Yeah, you should've seen the look they gave you when they said that. All right, fire away.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Jones, Mayor Jones and the council members. I'm Deanna Beeson, I'm the treasurer for this Senior Center. This is Lois Kaiser. She's the president and Tom Beckman, who is our, our new vice president for 2024. You'll be happy to hear, oh wait, I need to go back. When Mayor Jones suggested we give a yearly report, he said to include the good, the bad, and the ugly. So it's his fault.
Whoa, wait, you left that on tape?
Yes.
I don't think I said that.
Yes, you did.
Okay.
So we're attempting to do as he asked. You'll be happy to hear that the good for the year far outweighs the rest of our report. We have many highlights for 2023. We are always proud to be a part of any community celebration such as hosting the community business Christmas tree contest, bingo, a flowering arranging class, and pitch tournament during Jamboree Days, and serving chili during the wine walk. This year, we became the voting location during major elections, so that was new for us. The thing we are most proud of is setting up the Hartford Senior Citizens Foundation and granting $2,000 scholarships each year to two West Central students attending any higher education school. That was a collaboration between the Senior Citizens Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation and West Central School District. We were very proud to hand-deliver the two scholarships last spring and look forward to doing it again this year. Hosting the meal program is the most important thing we do for the community. In 2023, we served 3,135 meals on site. We delivered 2,646 meals and 1,074 meals were picked up and taken off-site. We couldn't do it without our community volunteers averaging about 25 a month that fill these positions. At this time, we have about 45 active volunteers from various churches, banks, and the community. We updated our space with new lightweight tables, glasses, and silverware, and put a nice saying on our new divider wall, so you need to come and take a look. We were excited to get the furnace taken out of the room, which really opened up the space. We are open to having anyone come and speak with us, as did Eric Knight, the superintendent of schools. He dined with us and answered questions from those in attendance. Mayor Jones dines and sometimes volunteers on a regular basis, and I'm sure he hears plenty from the diners around him when he's there.
Always. Oh, and I sing when I'm there.
He sings every time, yes, and we wait till he comes. We were super excited to have the ribbon cutting of our new space. It was very exciting to have all the dignitaries, the speeches, and receiving the lovely plaque. It was a fun day ending with entertainment from four classes of second graders. That was a really, 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 really nice day for us. Now, to the bad. I'm warning you, so you've got your gavel ready. You told me, he told me, he sometimes, yeah, my name is that. We have the same issue as other organizations have, and that is the senior interest. If we don't get more interest, there won't be a senior group. So we're working on getting the community more invested in 2024. For persons 55 and older, you can invest in the Hartford Senior Citizens for a donation of at least $20 per year. You'll be a part of the decision-making process for our continued growth in the community. You'll join us to help support community projects, the senior meal program, fundraisers, and ensure the seniors remain a vital part of this community. We have the forms next door if you wish to be an investor, and they just kind of look like this. And if anybody wants one, I got them. Have to push it, you know? We're also looking into a possible Hartford Community Partnership for $100 per year. As a community partner, you or your business would be advertised in our newsletter, on our Facebook page, enlisted as a partner at the Senior Center. This would enable us to keep moving forward and give back to the community in various ways. We are still in the discussion stage of this endeavor. We are working with Active Generations on getting our steam table replaced as all the units are not heating properly. We have been using this table, which was provided by Active Generations since the 1980s. So hopefully that will happen before it goes out completely. For our space, it would be nice to have all the stained ceiling tiles replaced so it doesn't look like the roof is still used.
Do you know about that, Craig?
Yeah.
I know, I'm pretty well about the tile.
He's like, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
He said, anything that was on our, out of our.
It's my fault, you guys, I told him, yeah.
There's still some white paint on the linoleum where that linoleum was replaced where the furnace was taken out. That would be nice if we could have that cleaned up. For the most part, we work well with the library. We're thinking that maybe the basement door should have a lock on it because that door between us and the library is always open. And on that same note, is that door always open because it's a fire door? Or why does that have to remain unlocked?
That's between you guys locking it.
Okay, we might have to have a discussion about that.
But also with the, the heat for the bathrooms and all being in their, on their side, it works better, I think, with it open.
All right.
It's just in, it's just something to think about with kids and other people being in there when none of us are on, in the other side, when we're closed, they're open, whatever. So, just a question. Storage is also an issue at the library, using the only storage closet we have as well, because that's never really been finished up yet either. We really wish the people cleaning would really clean, like mopping the floors especially.
That's not you, Craig.
No. But just, yeah. Just as a side note, we assume they clean the toilets because there's blue water in them the next morning, but not the floors. We, we know that those do not get cleaned. Hey, that's it for the bad.
Okay, good.
Oh, that was, yeah.
Good bad, okay.
Okay, so we only have one.
Oh.
The only big thing, and this isn't a new thing, this is something that is the dishwasher. We've had to have several repairs on it the last few months. We believe we're going to need a new dishwasher in the near future. I know we have problems with communication and getting repairs, but hopefully that will be better moving forward. Problem is, we can't wait when it needs to be repaired, and getting the proper person here takes time. Right now, it's working okay, so I'm sure this will be an ongoing discussion.
Is it a commercial-grade dishwasher you guys have? Okay, so it's not, okay.
Yeah, it's one of those big ones.
What does something like that cost, just out of curiosity, this, uh...
Oh, gosh, and we looked, we only really need the center part.
I'm quite about saying. You said 15,000 just for a standard one?
Oh, no, I think we could.
Can replace that one.
We couldn't get the center, we only need to get just that center part where the things go up and down because we have all of the side pieces. But I thought when we looked, it was more like four or five were that piece. Um, we looked at, um, what's that restaurant supply place in?
Maxwell's.
Maxwell's, yeah.
Okay.
So, but there's oftentimes used ones available, you know, from, um, like restaurants that may be going out of business or something, so I don't know.
So the city made the mistake when they bought the building of not giving you the dishwasher? The city's dishwasher, huh?
We probably, lines all came to the city.
We were in on, I mean, we all were in on that discussion, yeah. So, um, that's why I said it will be ongoing. But just be aware that it's something that maybe keep on the top of your head, you know, if you hear of something or a restaurant or somebody that. So, so overall, '23 has been great. We celebrate monthly with the newsletter that's available for everyone who dines with us or picks up a menu. We highlight everything that goes on at the center, including focusing on our volunteers so everyone can get to know them better. Mayor Jones and his wife, Deb, were highlighted in the July issue.
Yeah, we were.
Copy that? No. We are thankful for the collaboration with the city to help us stay a vital part of the community. You are all welcome to come have coffee in the morning, but you better come really early. Put a piece or two in the puzzle that's always being worked on, or dine with us sometime. Just be sure to let Lois know a day ahead of time. Thank you. Any questions?
I got a question on that, on that dishwasher. Maybe it might be a good idea just to get on a, with Maxwell, just for them to let you know when something comes available? Because I presume that the people you guys are feeding, right? There's like 3,000 meals between the people that came and picked it up and you delivered, right? It's like 3,000 or more than 3,000?
Well, there was 3,000 for just the people who dined in last year.
Okay, but.
Six total, about 6,000 total meals.
Okay, so 6,000 total meals, and I, and I think you guys cook all those meals in there, right? So you guys have to.
No, brooks, yeah, they, the meals come from brooks.
Okay.
So we do dishes for the 3,000 and some meals. The rest are all in. Well, the, the, some of the outgoing meals, we do the return things, and we run through the dishwasher again so they're sanitized, but, yeah.
I think it'd be good just to get on that call list with Maxwell. Hey, when, whatever size you need, when this comes available, maybe just let us know or something? Because, yeah, I think the senior, the Senior Citizens.
Craig, if you could find one for five, find two, because I know a restaurant that needs one.
Because this was a used one, and we bought this one. We first, we rented it, and then we ended up buying it, and it was a used one that.
And how long has it lasted?
Um, I'd say 10 years.
Yeah.
I've been here 12, so it was during my, well, it was here when I got here, but we purchased it after I got here. So we've had it more than 12 years.
It sounds like that, that could become an issue though, right? I mean, you don't, you don't have a dishwasher.
Right, well, then it depends how old it, you know, if we get a new one, I don't know how old this one was when we got it. But I'll tell you this, that it doesn't sound like it's a big deal, but when you have that many people and then you have one or two volunteers who are hand-washing dishes that day for everybody, and then they're not properly sanitized.
Yeah.
And so it is a big deal. Then, then we have to go buy paper plates or whatever we need, and those aren't always appropriate for the meals that we have either, so. So it is really important, and Lois and Helen really watch it, and so they know when it's not, it's like listening to your car. They know, they know when it's, yeah, they know when it's not working right. And so we always need to get somebody like now because we can't get it now, so.
Are there any programs for grants or funding for?
Um, I don't know. I do know, um, um, Nate, and I can't think, what's his last name?
That's it, Dowling?
Yeah, with the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation.
Or Nate Dowling.
Yeah, Nate Dowling. Did tell us of a place in Sioux Falls that you can sometimes get for nonprofits, that you can get like some of that kind of equipment. So we would just have to start asking around and try and find out.
Another one might be the Hartford Community Foundation, because it's specifically for, they do grants twice a year.
I think that's something we'll need to just keep discussing, but.
Yeah, so it would should be nice just to replace it and be.
Be done with it.
I know, because you know, any, any day when the cycle runs, you don't know for sure what's gonna.
Check and do.
So, anything else?
Alrighty, no, I think that's it. I think we'll keep moving along. We got another visitor that we gotta let talk next, so thanks you guys for coming. Thanks you guys.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, next up, we got Scott Bus from Minnehaha County Community Water. Thank you for coming tonight, Scott, for the invitation.
So in keeping with the, uh, the good, bad, the ugly.
Damn.
I can pretty much, I can summer, I can spend the whole talk in the good, the bad, the ugly. The good is that we've got enough water for now. The bad is that we don't have enough water for everything that everybody wants to do. And the ugly is we're gonna all have to sit down and figure it out together. And so for those of you that, I think we met maybe a year ago, I know it was cold out that day, with the economic development group and talked about this. I think this is probably a redo of the same information I gave you, and this is what I gave to the, the county commission when I met with them back in October of 2021. And it kind of goes through the, kind of the summary of where we're at in the county as far as water demand, water supply. And I don't know how much detail you want me to go in on it or where you'd like me to focus. If you've got some specific questions, I can address those. Or if you want me to go through it kind of at a high level, I can.
Just go through it at a high level, then we'll probably have some questions afterward.
So our, our big day in, in 2021 was in June. And what's happening is the lawn watering, the, the summer demand, and, and spraying season are kind of all hitting at once in the, in the last couple of years. And so our, our big day was around 7 million. See if I can find that. 6.8 million on the second page. And so we, we knew that we were getting close to what the capacity was on the treatment plants and the water that we can get from Lewis and Clark. And we wanted to add in there, well, we know that we've got that demand right now, but how much more are we contracted to with the towns that we serve? And so I added up the seven towns that we serve, and you can see, um, you can see what everybody is allocated there. And realize that if every, every town was taking their total capacity and we had a hot day like that, we were gonna be in some serious trouble. And so with that, um, our current peak availability of water, if you add up the 2 billion, 2.2 million we can get from Lewis and Clark plus the seven that we can treat, the treatment plant is 9.2. And that's real close to where, oops, real close to where we ended up on a hot day plus the, what everybody's got allocated. So, um, I went down on the third page and, and looked at our water rates. You can look through that, get more details a lot better. Currently, um, we're pulling out 5 million gallons. We do have the ability to take a little bit more out, but it's not, not anything that's gonna make a huge difference. And we realized that when we kind of threw up the red flag with the county, we were just having all kinds of requests from businesses coming into the county, from dairies, um, you know, the dairy south of Humble, the dairy north of Sherman. We also heard that if we had the water available, Bodewise would expand two more times. You know, a future 10,000 head dairy on the west side. At that point, they were looking at a place for the prison. I think they talked to you guys about that too. And we just said, you know, this is gonna be the size of the town of Baltic again. We just can't plop another town down in the county. So if you guys want to send gift cards for us not, not letting any prison come into Minnehaha County, I think my address is on there. But, you know, we were getting approached by ethanol plants, diesel plants, a second pork processing plant like the one that we need up on Benson Road in Sioux Falls. And there's always the talk of more milk processing being needed. And, um, the bottom line when it comes down to it is that all of the water in Minnehaha County is allocated, either between the city of Sioux Falls or Minnehaha Community Water. And so there's not a big, a big pool of water that we can go to. We can't take more out of the Big Sioux Basin just by adding another treatment plant. So what we're having to do is to go outside the county and start looking. And that's what led us to work with Big Sioux Community Water, and we've got the project now. We're probably going to be bidding that treatment plant towards the, we're gonna advertise it this month, bid it, open bids at the end of February. But that's still probably three years off before there's any water coming from there. Capacity of that treatment plant is scheduled to be 8 million gallons a day. And of that 8 million, Minnehaha is contracted for five of that, and Big Sioux is contracted for 3 million of that. But if you look at, you know, if you look at all the requests that we've had coming in, you know, we could've sold all that capacity and committed to businesses coming in long before we had the treatment plant. And then there's no more water in Woody County either. And, and so that's, that's the next step, and that's, Theresa's participating in that, and that's what's driving the need for Dakota Mainstem and looking to go to the, to the Missouri River and bring a big pipeline this direction. So, um, you know, what we had, what we've started telling Jesse when he was here, and we continue to tell him that, is that big water users need to go where the water source is at. Minnehaha County is no longer a good place for, for big water users.
Yeah, what do you consider a big water user?
Um, that looks a good question. You know, we can't handle a million gallons a day. We can't handle half a million gallons a day, depending on where it goes. And, and we should really be looking at some of the smaller ones too. And, you know, the prison, I think, was looking at 250,000 a day from our, from what we understood. So, you know, what it comes down to is a million gallons of water can go to like a cheese plant and satisfy them for a day, or it can go to 4,300 houses and take care of their needs. So that, that's what we're up against in this county is we can plop in one big business and take up all the water that's left and not have any water for housing in the towns or in the rural areas, either one. So I, we need to be extremely careful about who we let come in and what kind of businesses we're trying to recruit to the area. And so I think, I think we're trying to get that message across to the governor's office of economic development. Jesse's now out there, he still understands that big water users need to go to Chamberlain. His answer had always been, well, it wasn't my job to get somebody to move to Chamberlain, but now it is, so he understands that. So, um, that's, that's kind of a 10,000-foot look at where we're at on water. You know, we're kind of the point where we need to be real careful with what we're doing and, um, because of the next steps are gonna take a long time. It's gonna take probably three to five years for us to get the availability from the Dakota, from the shared resources plant that we're sharing at Big Sioux. And then if it has to go somewhere else, we gotta add that infrastructure on top of it. And it's probably 20 to 30 years before we can get a big source of water from, uh...
From Dakota Mainstem.
From Mainstem. And it's, it's really gonna take the wisdom of Solomon on that is if you've got one chance to get an amount of water from the river and know that you're probably not gonna see it again for another 1,500 years, how much do you ask for? What kind of growth do you figure? And, and that's, that's something we're struggling with, just to know. I mean, we're probably gonna ask for at least as much as the total system capacity now, but what do you, what do you predict? Do you predict growth like it is now or growth like it was 10 years ago? And, and then how do you spread the costs of something like that out among the existing customers and future customers? Taking a lot of, a lot of angry calls over $10 at this point. And I'm guessing that's going all the cities too.
All right, so you guys got any questions? I got one, I wanna.
I've got one.
Go ahead, I'll let you fire away first.
Just out of curiosity, I got two. So, um, that, for example, like that existing dairy plant south of Humble, I thought they had wells drilled out there where they're getting their water from.
They do. At the time when we were looking at that, though, they were looking to us to see if we could provide it.
Okay.
So we, um, we provide water to, basically it's brother, sister, or sister-in-law, brother-in-law up by Baltic.
Yep.
And I want to say they're using, mm, they're using as much as Hartford or Del Rapids.
Per day.
Yeah, per day. And so we, we dodged a bullet, and they, they didn't want to pay for the infrastructure, and they're not putting wells out there.
So this is, this is two and a half years old.
Yeah.
That's why that's on it, that makes sense, yeah, okay. And then my other question is, so how do you guys on the, because there's a board, or you guys operate as a board? And is that just made up of community, like, members in the?
It's like the city council, it's elected, it's members of the system elected from different parts of the county. So there's seven of them.
Then how do you guys go about allocating water usage? Like, what does that process look like? Is it a vote? What does that kind of paint me a picture of?
You know, this, this is kind of new for the whole region.
Right, because we've been on 20-year contracts, and they're just kind of starting to come to the end.
And, and this is, this is really new for the whole region, that we've got these huge businesses that want to come in, whether it's ethanol plants, dairies, whatever. I mean, we've had, been approached by wet grain processing plants that need like 5 or 6 million gallons a day. And so, um, you know, it used to be we'd add 50 to 100 new customers, the cities would have their growth, and everybody was kind of looking 20 years out. We're kind of new territory with, with the big businesses that want to come in just because of, you know, over the last couple of years, how, um, and part, part of it comes back to the business atmosphere in South Dakota compared to some of the surrounding areas. And, and just Sioux Falls is an attractive nuisance at this point. I mean, it's like a pool without a fence around it. All the neighbor kids are coming.
So, and then I'll let the mayor ask, because I, I'm pretty packed, because you need water to grow, you need water to sustain, right? It's a double-edged sword. Do you guys anticipate keeping with 20-year contracts? Or do you think that's just too long for a community to sign up for, because like, you know?
That, that's a good, a good question, and I don't know that I know the answer on that one. I think the 20-year contract came in from World Development, and that was the length of the World Development loans. And they wanted you to make sure that you knew how much water you needed so you weren't looking for more water while you're still paying off that first loan. I think that's where the 20 years came from, so. I, I know we've been approached by Del Rapids, I know you guys have. The, the city staff has done a great job of kind of anticipating the needs from the area around town that's, that's been annexed in already. And we know that there's growth out there. I think we're gonna have to sit down and talk about it as a region, you know, and look at it all together, maybe all together in one room and see, see what that looks like. Because there's not gonna be enough water from this new treatment plant to get everybody their Christmas list.
Right.
I wonder if some of the cars you're getting aren't all about the same businesses, though.
Could be.
Is it really three dairies, or is it one dairy that everybody's looking at? You know what I mean?
Um, there's some of that. You know, when they're looking to you guys and they know that you have wastewater capability, that they're also talking to Del Rapids, you know, the, the ethanol, the, the jet fuel plant looked at Del Rapids, looked at Colton, looked at those. The dairies, those are individual dairies. The one by, the one by Humble wants to build another 10,000 head one. The one east of Baltic wants to expand, and Bodewise is the third one that he said he'd build two more if, if, if the water was there. So there's a huge, a huge. So, uh, there's a huge, a huge pent-up demand, but this is not the place for those big water users anymore, like it was, you know, thirty, forty years ago. And, and I think that's, that's probably why that new twelve thousand head dairy is going up in the summit area that, um, is related to, you know, the governor's family. Cause that's the, that's one of the nearest points where there's a big amount of water left, is in the summit area. So no, no other counties in the I-29 corridor would be able to handle something like that.
That all flows north there anyway, right? All that water flows north?
Um, that's still in the south flowing. Anything from Campeska, um, comes south, and that's where the Big Sioux River comes and starts, and then we all take turns using it and putting it back.
Kind of roughly up through there.
Yeah, north of there, once you get over the continental divide up there, yeah, the, the summit area is kind of, I think in the west of Watertown, kind of in that same area that feeds, that feeds the James River, the Sioux, the Sioux River.
Well, we, I, I've said this to our staff before, I'm glad that we've anticipated years ago and have our allocation set as high as we do. And we sure don't wanna go in reverse, and we'd take more even if we couldn't explain why we needed more, I'd take more, just so we had it in our back pocket. I would agree with you, Scott. At some point, I don't know who drives it, the state or you or who drives it, but this whole deal has to everybody get to the table and figure out what's gonna happen. Because we're all getting asked the same questions and nobody can give the answer.
Yeah.
Um, Amy and I were at a meeting and I said that exact thing. I said, why do we keep beating this ball around? Somebody has to sit down and figure it out. I don't know how that happens.
Yeah, so if, if you look at where the water has gone in the past, um, seventy percent of the water has been used by, uh, customers served directly by Minnehaha Community Water, whether it's homes, businesses, dairies, rural residences, all that. And thirty percent of the water has gone to the towns. If you look at that same percentage carrying forward and you look at the capacity that we're gonna get from, um, the shared resources project, that only leaves a million and a half gallons to be split between Hartford, Del Rapids, Garrett's, and Baltic.
Right.
And I, that's not enough for what everybody's requesting. So I, it's probably something that we'll just all have to sit in a room and figure out. And, you know, everybody's gonna, part of it is Hartford's done a really good job of looking forward and doing their planning. And Hartford has a good handle on, you know, hey, we've got this many acres, we anticipate this much water use. Um, other towns are not that far along. So part of the challenge is pulling them up to where you guys are at.
Or just letting myself a lot of it.
Yeah.
Or not a lot of it. I'll make a, I'll make a note on that.
What's your favorite restaurant?
No, and Hartford, Hartford.
What do you want?
So, yeah, so, so the no prison and, no prison in Minnehaha County, they have like, they're gonna be most of the same here, yes.
Wow.
But, you know, seriously.
There was Rome links, but, I mean, since it's on tape, there was Rome links, but nobody ever talked to us. Not us. About the prison. There was, there was nobody ever on this stage.
It was Facebook.
Yeah, there was a news article that was written that...
That talked about our, our Sioux plant.
Yeah.
It.
In conjunction with the prison, yeah.
Well, we, yeah, we were talked to at, at, on a couple of different occasions about different spots in the county.
Right.
And whether we could, uh, whether we could, um, serve a big facility at that location. And so your, your name did come up in all that too.
I imagine that.
Don't invite us to the conversation.
You made the comment about Sioux Falls and being a swimming pool without a fence. When we put plans out there that we were building this wastewater treatment plant, very similar situation. That's why I think we are getting as much interest as we can, because from the wastewater side, I mean, yeah, we don't, we couldn't take it right out of the chute, but we could work into, into that much water. You know?
You, you know, you started off with the good, the bad, and the ugly, you know, period on the heels of the senior center. But if we think about what Art said, we think about what you've said, it's the good and the bad and the opportunity. But to figure out, to find the opportunity.
Right.
And then plan accordingly, because currently it's, it's the Wild West.
Yep.
It's going everywhere, everybody needs everything, and we need it right now. That's, that's not...
Well, it's great to have put up all the, put out all those requests for information or whatever, but when, when everyone is trying to ask the same question, can we get, right now, we can't get the water to do this. So tell us how we can get the water, and then we could probably submit it.
And that doesn't appear to be an answer that anybody wants to hear. That's not what they wanna hear.
Um, the good news is that in his new role, uh, in the governor's office, Jesse has, um, has contacted and contracted with ISG for a statewide study of infrastructure to be able to narrow down those places where big industries can go, where the, the power's available, where the wastewater's available, where, uh, water, natural gas, and, and roads and that kind of stuff. And so they're looking to identify, I think maybe a dozen to sixteen different communities within South Dakota and really do a better job of focusing where their, um, requests are coming from, you know, so they can, if they get somebody that comes in and says, hey, we wanna do a cheese plant, we need a million gallons of water, they can say, well, we've got a spot over here that, that it makes sense. Instead of, instead of playing one town against every town, cause you know if they're coming to you, they're coming to Del Rapids, they're fighting everybody. And just playing you guys against each other on cost.
Yeah.
It's a great, it's a great idea.
Yeah, so a lot of credit to Jesse on that one.
You know where that's at? Where that is at, Michael?
I do not. Are you referring to the statewide cabinet of land or just the infrastructure?
Um, statewide infrastructure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard that that was happening, so...
I know we filled out, um, our portion of the water resources and what water rights we have and what our projects are in the future.
Right.
And turned it in. Um, I'm assuming they're still gathering information and gonna put out a big report.
It's, it's really hard for us when we have a great allocation of water and we wanna keep that great allocation of water. And I've said to some people, I'm not gonna give away our future for five years' worth of glory, if you wanna call it that. Because what do we do after five years? I'll be done as mayor and the next guy's gonna take a whipping. And, you know, we don't necessarily wanna do that. And it is really, I think it's crucial that we get everybody to sit down and talk about this deal so we can figure out what's, what's the best plan. And my thing, Scott, I'll add to that is, we gotta be careful, these other states and these other regions are gonna start looking at the Missouri River, not necessarily in South Dakota, but they're gonna go upriver from us, they're gonna go to Missouri or North Dakota or wherever and start sucking water out. And where's that, what's that gonna do to this deal?
Yeah, there's already been investigations and engineering studies about, um, basically digging an open canal from the Missouri River down into Mexico.
Yeah, I heard that too.
Yeah, we've actually seen that reported.
Yes.
Yeah.
Not much water.
That's horrible.
So, yeah, and, and I, I think that's one of the things that... I think with the Winds Project up in north, northern South Dakota, which is Aberdeen, Webb, and Grand Robert's.
Right.
And then with Dakota Mainstem, which is everybody on the east side, and then the, uh, West River, uh, project, which is everybody West River.
Right.
Um, uh, there's been a lot of emphasis, like you said, on, um, we need to utilize what's flowing through the state and not let somebody else come get it.
Correct, right.
That's, that's Troy Larson's way with, the painless line.
Yeah.
We got plenty of water, we just gotta figure out how to keep it all here in South Dakota.
Yeah.
Well, how do you get on the board? When does that happen?
For rural water?
Yeah.
Um, you need to be a direct customer of Minnehaha Community Water. And every April, um, there is election, you can get a petition, and then there's an election each...
You mean like, by direct, it would be, we're not each individual, we're not a direct customer.
Correct, correct.
Okay, gotcha. So people in the towns?
You guys are a member, yep.
But people that live in all of your communities, none of us would be eligible to be on what you've gotten.
Okay.
It's ironic, kind of.
That's a great question. Yeah, okay.
So...
Anything else for, uh, Scott? We really do appreciate your time. You get that, uh, meeting set up, make sure that you let somebody know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Cause we'd sure like to have somebody at the table.
And, and like we talked about before, it's, it's definitely not something that, um, you know, we're gonna pit one against the other or we're not gonna take somebody who's ready and allocate it all to them and leave everybody else out. So there, there's not a risk of, um, of missing out because you weren't fast enough. Um, uh, the other consideration is, you know, with, this treatment plant's gonna be up in Woody County. Um, we know that the infrastructure for the treatment plant and the lines to get it back to Minnehaha County is about a hundred million dollars. So each million gallon of capacity is gonna cost about twenty million dollars. But then it has to, you know, if, if you guys are wanting a million gallons, then it's, how do you get it from the take-up down to Hartford? And so that's a much higher cost. That's more time, money, infrastructure, and all that stuff, so.
Oof, damn.
Yeah. Not an easy answer, but, you know, if, if we're smart about it.
Yeah.
We've got water for quite a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, and, and I mean, I feel like we do know what we need. And so, I mean, I would, I don't think it's right to give other communities like they might need it or they have kind of this big far-flung thing that they might get, you know, in terms of like sacrificing known needs in other communities. So I, I, I was kinda joking when I said, you know, well, just let us keep it. But in some regards, I mean, when we have a legitimate rationale to that amount and other communities don't, I think that should count for something.
Sure.
Yep.
And, and I think, yeah, that's part of the discussion for when everybody sits together. I mean, Del's and Hartford are gonna have to talk and have to figure out, hey, we've got this much developable of land and we have these many new houses coming in, we think we need this much water and, you know, and we gotta sit down and figure out how we're gonna divide it up. Cause it's not enough to go around, unfortunately.
All right. Anything else?
Hate to finish on the ugly thing.
No, no, that's good, that's all good. We really do appreciate you coming up, Scott.
Yeah, thank you, Scott.
It's only ugly if you don't know where your opportunity is.
Yeah, I like that.
If you're surprised, it's too late.
All right. Thank you. We're in the seven oh five hearing, fun to do. Not too good. Sorry about that, I knew we were gonna have to take one of them, Scott, to give us that update. All right, let me get to the next. First up under the hearings is first reading for ordinance seven forty-eight, which is an amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding chapter nine, adding chapter nineteen, the chapter nineteen of conditional use. Teresa, did any of the hand to this, or give the background?
Um, yeah, my report, this has gone through planning and zoning, we've discussed it at a few meetings. Basically, um, we have, you know, a section in our planning and zoning ordinance that addresses conditional use permits and the process of how you go about getting a conditional use and that whole formal, like I said, process there. Um, this past year, though, we, um, ran into a situation where we have some violations of a current user and we were looking at revoking their permit. All filing, man, there is no section in our current regulations that say, what's the process for revoking a permit? So we worked with Tom, our attorney, and kind of guided us through that and what we need to do, and that's all settled now. But, um, on hindsight, we think for future use, so the public knows the process, the staff knows the process, to get a section put in there that addresses what exactly that process is and how to go about it. So that's what this is doing, is adding a section to our conditional use, um, regulations that, about revoking a permit and what that process is. Um, I worked with CCOG to draft this, it's fairly simple. Basically, if, uh, there's any violations or you wanna look at revoking a permit, you have to give that permit holder a thirty-day notice saying that you need to come into compliance, um, or their permit's gonna be revoked on this day. Now during that thirty-day, basically, period, they can, um, ask for a hearing in front of the planning and zoning board, cause that's who issued the permit, and they can, uh, have a public hearing to address it. Either they've corrected it or, you know, not, they can come before the board. Um, and then it's the board's decision whether they let the CUP continue or not. Um, so that's their, but they do get, you know, their say-so at a public hearing. If they don't, within that thirty-day period from their notice, contact us at all and ask for that public hearing, then it gets automatically revoked, um, the day in the letter, so...
So this doesn't really get into the reasons?
No, no, and the reasons is all to come to the board, and it's the board's decision of whether to allow it to continue or not. And the one we had, we did give them a grace period of continuing, um, but there were definitely parameters that they had to stay within. And if for any reason they don't meet those, then it's automatically revoked, so...
All right.
Basically, it gives them a public hearing in front of the planning and zoning board.
So in the event that their CUP is revoked, and because they didn't come into compliance within that thirty-day period, what happens on the thirty-first day?
It gets revoked, we won't allow them to do whatever operations they're doing, they'll have to cease it.
So you cease it by court order, by sheriff's order, by...
No, we don't have to go to court or whatnot.
Standing there or not?
Yeah, it'll be the code enforcer going in and...
What's that?
It'll be the code enforcer going in.
The code enforcer has to stand there and tell them to go home? Well, I mean, I'm, I'm being serious, honestly, because, you know, we, we failed to write into our ordinance what to do when somebody doesn't follow the CUP. I don't wanna be sitting here and go, okay, we, we didn't think about what would happen.
I mean, basically, if it gets revoked and they don't cease it, we would have to go through the court system.
So they couldn't, they didn't finance, continue to operate.
Not avoid that.
Right, so they couldn't, they couldn't...
There'll be a violation, they'll take it to the judge, they're still operating, I mean, that's gonna just work against them.
Sure.
And why not? But then it becomes, it becomes a legal action.
Right, we saw that.
It's not the cities.
Right, where these problematic properties just continue to cost the taxpayers money. You know, month after month, year after year, and that keeps...
This basically addresses what the city can do, yeah. Now, once it's revoked and they don't comply with that, then we'll be, have to take court action. Just like any other ordinance that isn't...
Ordination, right.
That's not the...
We're showing how successful those can be.
Unfortunately, they're not criminal.
Right. All right, so apparently, yeah, really, it's your point about being criminal is if there is, uh, the violation is criminal and you really have to chase that down, if there's something illegal. Well, if they're gonna be criminal, then they can invoke the law, unfortunately.
And our zoning regulations, a whole different section about penalties about any violation within the ordinance.
That's what I wanted to, to make sure, that it was linked to that.
Any violation, any ordinance.
Okay, that's, that's the answer I was looking for, thank you.
All right, action from the council.
Making motion to approve the first reading of ordinance seven forty-eight.
Second?
Any discussion?
The board of adjustments on here is planning and zoning, correct?
They're designated board of adjustments. Yep, they, they, uh, basically adjourn as planning and zoning to reconvene at the board of adjustments, but it's the same people.
Sounds good.
The board of adjustments is the formal board.
That procedure's also in place.
Yes, that procedure is in place in our region.
Okay.
All right, anything else? If not, well, well, Washlander?
Yes.
Natson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
All right, the next one is ordinance seven fifty-one, this is an amendment to the zoning ordinance, uh, chapter twelve point oh eight regarding fences.
This is another, um, zoning amendment that planning and zoning's been talking about. Um, basically, um, they've reviewed our fence ordinance, and it's come to the tension that a couple of sections in our fence ordinance, section E and F that deal with corner lots, the placement of where you can place a front, a fence, the verbage is pretty confusing. I mean, it's even confusing for new staff coming in, I've just gone to Kyle a couple of times. Currently, you can have a four-foot fence in your front yard, a six-foot fence in your rear yard. But the side yard, um, you can have four-foot if you go to the property line. If you wanna go six-foot like your backyard, you gotta set it in ten feet. And it talks about front yard and then your side front yard and, like I said, it's a little confusing. So we worked with CCOG on this too, of how can we maybe explain that a little bit better for the public?
So we worked with CCOG on this too of how can we maybe explain that a little bit better for the public and for staff? So it's kind of a little bit clearer. So they rewrote it to basically kind of just break it down. In the front yard, you just kinda like what I told you, is this and that. It's not at all, it's not a big paragraph of trying to read and figure it out. So we broke it down into steps, kind of, and then we added a couple illustrations, which we thought would be a lot of help where people can see it. This is what you can do. So we had an illustration for the corner lot, and then we also just added a second illustration for a mid-block lot, just so they can see the difference. So I think that'll help both the public and staff with showing them what they can do. The regulation is completely the same as what we currently have, except the planning and zoning board, um, talked about on that side yard, eliminating that setback, setback, sorry, um, in there. So in your side yard, you can have a six-foot tall fence right up to the property line. You don't have to be that ten-foot in. They talked a little bit, you know, they wanted to make sure it didn't interfere with, you know, sight vision at the intersections. But every yard has that twenty-five-foot front yard setback. So you're twenty-five feet back already at a minimum. A lot of houses are even back further than that. So you still get that twenty foot of that corner sight vision. So they didn't think that would interfere at all with that. So they were comfortable with taking away that ten-foot setback on the side yards and letting the side yard in residential be six feet like normal, um, in light industrial what is eight feet. So that is the one change. Otherwise, it's just kind of rewording the verbage a little bit to make it a little bit clearer for the people. So they're recommending that changes.
Where was the, uh, fence ordinance last amended?
Ooh. These sections? I'm not sure. It's been amended since I've been here.
Planning and zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably. Probably since you've been up.
This has been a long time. Once, what's it been since you've been up planning and zoning? Ten?
It was, um.
Well, eight, almost.
Probably.
I think it was probably around one, so it's probably like fifteen years ago.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
All right, any action on, uh, this one or this review?
I make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance seven hundred and fifty-one.
Second.
Any more discussion? Any none? Well, well, Bowen.
Yes.
Keel. Yes. Mattson.
Yes.
Washlawner.
Yes.
All right, next up, second reading of ordinance seven forty-nine. And that is our update on fines and fees. Nothing's changed since the first reading?
Nope.
Motion to approve second reading of ordinance seven forty-nine.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Bowen.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Mattson. Washlawner, yes. Next up is second reading of ordinance seven fifty, supplemental appropriation.
Motion to approve second reading of ordinance seven eighty.
Second.
Any discussion? Any none? We'll vote. Washlawner.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Bowen. Next up, resolution twenty twenty-four dash two, adopt our twenty twenty-three pre-disaster mitigation plan.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash two, pre-disaster mitigation plan as presented.
Second.
How often do we change that?
Every five years.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I thought I seen that in there somewhere.
Yep.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
All right, any other discussion on that? If not, we'll vote. Washlawner, yes. Mattson.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Last one under resolutions, twenty twenty-four dash three, appoint representative to SMGA advisory board.
Is there two things wrapped into this?
Uh, well, yes, because you also put the, we have to allocate the funds.
We don't. You, you wanted to discuss, I mean, because the funds aren't in, uh, the bill report or anything. It's, I just kinda threw it in there for you guys to discuss. Uh, the resolution basically designated a representative on the SMGA advisory board, a representative and an alternate, which is Amy and then Mayor Jones. So that's the actual resolution. They did send along kind of a job description of what this position does, so I put that in there for your reference. Tyler also had, had sent, um, informations with Sum Metro lines, kind of what he had handed out that meeting he was here, what they're hoping to do for the city. And I, I threw in the invoice just for your guys' reference. I said if everybody's kosher with it, we will put it in the next bill report. But this is really just approving the resolution to designate somebody on the advisory board.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that there was any questions that since Tyler was here.
So I got a question. So do we, with this bill, is that something we vote on or not?
No, no, that's just for your reference.
It's in our budget already.
It's in our budget. I just wanna make you aware. What we're paying for, uh, membership into SMGA?
I'm gonna cause a little bit of debate here. Why is, uh, HADF not paying for that?
It's the cities that are.
And here's my, yeah, I understand that. I mean, it's kind of an open-ended question, but, um, they, the Hartford Development Foundation, in my opinion, would be the, the foundation that would utilize SMGA for the services that they provide and for what they do. So I'm just kind of curious. And I know historically the cities paid for that. But I would like to cause a little bit of discussion on that of, I mean, when I was on HD, HADF and Amy, I'm gonna kind of poke and prod you a little bit. You know, I don't remember, I was on there for a year and a half, where we ever actually used SMGA.
Just a handful of times.
I think my question, Sean, in response to what you were asking is, I think not all Hartford development matters go through HADF. I mean, a lot of them come through the city, right? I mean, I think we both need it. I guess I get confused about what we think is HADF, if it's not HADF land or HADF. Like, there's other things that come through the city that aren't community development.
Like what?
Um, some of the, some of, some of the things in economic development that we've talked about that are not.
And what I think, what I would say, I think where SMGA will help us as a city would be in marketing, if, if that's, I'm gonna use that word very loosely. But they are always out there promoting the area. And I feel we need to be in that rather than not be in that. You know what I mean? If they're talking about the Sum Metro growth area, I'd rather be in, included in that than not. That's my opinion.
Better fraternity.
It's kind of like that.
I'm not sure what you get, but here's your symbol.
You get friends in a place.
Well, and that, that's kind of how I feel, and I'll be open about this, is that I still don't know what the heck they actually do. I've, I've had a couple conversations, one, we had one in public, and I, I still really don't know what they do. So maybe it's, it's something that I need to dig in on a little bit, but I'm, I'm not sold, I'm not personally, I'm gonna make my opinions known because I'm elected on this council. I'm not sold on the value of what they bring and I'm not, and I don't, and that's probably because I don't really know what the heck they actually do, like that, the real value. Okay, we're giving this money, and I know we can't, um, you know, this, it's not necessarily transactional, right? Like, we pay this and we get this. I know that's not how this operates. I'm just, I need to be sold on what they do. So I know we're not voting on this.
Right.
Uh, in terms of the bill, but I am probably gonna get, I, I do need answers.
Yep.
And, and I need to see value if we're gonna utilize it or paying this. And so the reason why I bring up HADF is, you're right, I think that what you're saying, Cindy, is there is, you're right, it's not just an HADF thing. But here's where I get a little bit confused. So the city pays for it, but, you know, it's very common, as what Tyler said, for them to work really more with the development obligations. If we go back to that meeting, like, that's who they really work a lot with. Obviously, they work with cities as well. So I'm just curious if there's a way to split that, split that amount. Split that amount between HADF and the city. Because I don't know how that looks if we're paying for it and then another organization is possibly utilizing that. Is there an issue there or not? I don't think historically there has been, but I think it's something that we should think about if they want to split that cost with us.
Well, that's, that's definitely, oh, go ahead.
I mean, so this resolution is to appoint the representative to the SMGA.
Yeah.
And to address your concern, maybe we look at who we're appointing as the representative.
Yeah.
You know, and so maybe that's where our conversation should really focus on.
Right.
And does this action need to happen today? I mean, what happens if we don't take action on this tonight?
I don't think they're gonna kick us off, so I don't know.
I, our, our current representative would stay in that position, right? It was like their terms up and they're.
Correct.
Not invited back, so.
I mean, we.
You make a great point.
Right, if we wanna have more discussion about this, we can surely table this and discuss it at the first meeting in February. There's nothing wrong with that. I agree, Sean. I, you're making, you're making some valid points. I think they need to be discussed. I know we have a meeting tomorrow morning with the HADF. It'd probably be a good time just to throw that on the table.
Well, I, I know there's, there's always been discussion about, yes, what are we getting?
Right.
You know.
Who's getting the most bang for? Yeah, who's getting the most bang for the buck? That's the.
Well, and, and I get it too. A is eleven thousand dollars, so it's maybe more the point than the amount of money that we're talking about here. But I think, much like with Amy's role, you know, it's not just with ADF. She has responsibilities to the city. I think this plays into that, so I don't see it as something squarely in the HADF world. I mean, Arden takes advantage of it, there are a lot of connections that he has. There's other projects that come through them that don't come to HADF, you know, so those are coming through that organization too. Not that I'm a big defender. I'm with you. I don't really exactly yet, but I don't see it as, and maybe that's either my life of experience and understanding about HADF, or the fact that I don't feel like all of our economic development sits in their hands. I feel like it sits here as well.
Right, yep.
And so that's, to me, why it's valued to both sides.
And I think we have a crucial say in what HADF ends up doing because of the control of the infrastructure. That's the other thing. And a lot of the, uh, requests for information that filter through SMGA for projects ultimately have to be answered by us.
Yep.
If we're gonna yea or nay it, really. That's the other reason why the city needs to, hate to use the words keep our fingers in it, but we kind of, sometimes gotta keep our fingers in it.
So if we table this thing, it gives us two weeks, three weeks to.
Yep.
Talk to Teresa, talk to Amy, talk to Art, and talk to the HADF, maybe get some, you know, have another meeting with somebody from SMGA, you know, to, yeah, hopefully answer some of your questions.
I mean, who's, who's, for example, not by name, by position, who else is on this advisory board?
The majority of the people are your EDOs. And, and to your point, um, Sean, when you talk about what have we gotten for it, so they've assisted on some of the RFIs. They've allowed us to have some podcast, um, opportunities to promote, they help promote the burger battle on the Chambers side. They, um, reached out when Wynne was hired and to help push out the full-time ED and then also push her out as the Chamber person. Um, so I mean, they're trying to do better, reaching out and doing those things. So I mean, the last podcast we did obviously didn't work out well, so we have to redo it. Um, but for the most part, it's the EDOs and then, um, being able to do those different things that they offer every now and then.
Sure. So where do we, so the funds that are allocated this, for this eleven thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars and fifty cents, in the budget, where are those allocated?
They're in the general fund. Or wait, no, no, sorry. You're right.
There was no lineup.
It sounds like they should be under advertising.
Yeah, I got the ring.
Marketing advertising.
Or marketing advertising, really.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so that becomes more of them. If you wrap your head around where is the money coming from budgetary-wise? And to the point she brought up, that's, that's promotion, that's marketing.
And they put us in their Growing Places magazine once or twice now.
Marketing advertising.
So it comes out of the planning and zoning, which is our economic development.
Really?
Which is in the general fund.
Which is, that seems kind of like a weird bucket of money to hold, in my opinion.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, do we wanna take action or do we wanna?
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four, actually, to appoint a representative to the SMGA advisory board as listed.
We have a second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Any none? We'll vote. Washlawner.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Bowen.
So can I ask one question, Amy?
You could say no. It's gonna pass anyway, and then ask a question.
No, it's not gonna pass.
If I say no, it's not gonna pass, so can I ask an additional question? Do you, so, because you're gonna be the one on the board, do you feel confident that this is a good, um, use of taxpayer dollars to be on that board, to be involved in, to do those things?
I think to an extent, yes. Because it is pushing the information out there for us.
I'm, I'm gonna vote yes, but I'm gonna, I need more information at the same time from this, from, not from SMGA.
I was gonna say, would you like to come to the meeting with me next, or two Fridays from now, January twenty-sixth?
I'm gonna say yes, but I need, I need to be sold on what they're doing.
So like, yes, but under protest?
That's what I.
I just am calling, I just wanted to call the vote and.
I'm just, I'm just on that side, because.
Hey, I loved you at the last.
I know, I appreciate that.
All right. We clear as mud? All right, very much. Let's move on to the boards. Fire rescue, I think we have one of the assistant chiefs or?
Future chief. I don't know about that one. Now, Amy, uh, kind of order him as first assistant rescue chief. Fortunately, Brian couldn't make it tonight. Uh, work conflict. Getting a leave, it might have just been an excuse not to come out in the cold. But here I am. So, uh, just to give you a, um, little bit of an update on what's going on with the fire department. So we'll start off with, uh, December, uh, call totals. Um, last month, we ran seventeen total calls. Uh, eight of those were within the city, so. Um, with that, that ended our year of twenty twenty-three with three hundred and forty-five calls per service, and one hundred and forty of those were within Hartford City ordinance. So a little bit of a, uh, decrease from twenty twenty-two, which is welcome, but, um, still busy, so. Um, this month for training, um, is our, um, recertification for CPR. Uh, we did our first night of training last night, where we do, uh, an A and J course to get our CPR certification. We also went through, uh, the pit crew CPR model, um, as well as, um, certifying on our cardiac monitors and Lucas, Lucas devices. So, uh, we had our first class last night. Our second class is next Wednesday. Uh, last week, at our monthly meeting, we did a joint training on, uh, trench rescue awareness. Um, looking around the area with the amount of, uh, development going on, and a lot of trenches opening up in the ground. So we just wanted to make sure that we, we are prepared as we can be in case of, of a trench collapse with, with a victim, um, inside, so.
When I seen them, I thought that's a great idea.
Yep, yep. Um, it's, yeah, quite evident, especially when you're heading east of town, so.
Sure.
We also did a little bit of review, um, on how to, some of the updates for writing our fire and the master boards that get funded with the state, so. Um, December, we also hosted our, held our elections for twenty twenty-four. Um, had a few changes, um, but going into twenty twenty-four, the leadership team, uh, Brian remains chief. Uh, Bryce Wach, uh, stayed in his role as first assistant fire chief. Todd Lowe stepped down and Adam Erickson, uh, filled the spot of second assistant fire chief. Um, I retain my position as first assistant rescue. Um, Kami Crouch stepped down as second assistant rescue, and Ryan Rikus stepped into that position. Um, James Buzz, naturally, stayed as treasurer. Um, John Hanson stepped out as secretary, and Donnie Rolson now, um, fills that position for us. And then we had two members at large who stepped away, Katie Kruger and, um, Braden Johnson. And those positions were filled by John Hanson and Austin Agarwada. So, um, that's kind of what we've been up to. So any questions for me at all?
Are all of your leadership positions annual?
Yep, yep, every single, every year, every position is voted for again, so. Just enough time to get into a position, have a year, finally figure out what you're supposed to be doing and then possibly not be in that position. Just enough time to get into a position, have a year, finally figure out what you're supposed to be doing and then possibly not be in that position.
Sounds like state council.
A little bit, a little bit, so.
Do you guys ever do, like, certification for, what am I thinking of? Someone's choking CPR and all that. Do you guys ever do like public things for that, or is that something you guys have ever done?
Yeah, so we actually have Barb Thaler and Donnie Rolson are both A H A instructors. They host several CPR classes throughout the year.
Up at the fire station?
Yep, so most of them are groups, so like the dental clinic, the area daycares. But generally, we usually have a couple that will be open to the public and we can definitely bring it up.
Cool.
Trying to host some more, so COVID kind of put a dampener on a lot of that for a few years. So, but now that we're hopefully on the upswing and.
Barb Thaler does the, teaches the lifeguards do.
Yep, yep. Does all the cool drills and everything for them, so.
She did all the city hall too, so we're certified on the A E D and some of your.
Yep, and then the fire department kind of makes sure that all the A E Ds around town are in operating condition, so.
Are all the classes free of charges or?
So the cost to get the card is eight dollars per person. But otherwise, Barb and I don't charge to instruct anything, so, but if you want to receive an actual card, it's eight dollars, so. Eight dollars well spent to have that.
You should do mine again too.
But yeah, we can definitely bring it up, trying to maybe host some more classes this year. I'll bring it back, so.
That'd be awesome.
But yeah, CPR was a big topic this last year, especially after the, I forget his name, the football player, the NFL player.
Oh, yeah.
Lot of, lot of CPR classes being held this last year.
Hamel, Hamel?
Hamlin.
Hamlin.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, any other questions?
Also, the builder of my first house died in a trench collapse.
Oh, what?
For a long, probably before, probably not before you were born, but probably close.
Twenty-five years ago.
I was born.
You were born.
Kind of kindergarten, but.
I started with a four, then I was like, hmm, they got it.
I know that was always Pat Smith's, like, she always brought that up.
All right, any other questions for Connor? Thank you very much for coming. Thanks for all the work you guys do.
Thank you. Happy to do it. So thank you very much.
Be back. Next up, Amy Farr.
So my information is in the packet, but I do have two updates. Right before I came in, I did receive. We just said Amy Farr.
He was trying to give you a title.
Oh, you wanna give me a title, okay.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so my information's in the packet, however, like I said before I came in, I did receive a couple updates. So the housing study will be finalized by tomorrow morning, so we should be able to start handing them out. The artwork and everything was kind of a holdup, so he did send me a text message saying it's ready tomorrow morning, so excited about that.
Artwork, artwork was holding out.
Yes, they had to have something really pretty around the water tower. Teresa liked it. I was kind of like, eh, but it's okay. It'll be nice.
New water tower, new local.
But the, anyway, so anyhow, moving on. So I did have a meeting today with the engineers for H A D F and Hartford Township to talk about our non-jurisdictional wetland up towards the north that connects into their property. And I had a very good conversation, President Ike with the H A D F was also present. They have asked myself and Phil from Infrastructure Design to be at their meeting on February sixth at seven P M. So I will go there first and then I will be a little late for this meeting, but they are going to talk and discuss if it's okay for us to grade the land coming down and creating another little holding pond, I guess we'll call it, to have the water fill in versus us filling it in and it back flowing to them, which would not be a good thing, so that's my update.
Is it a retention or a?
Don't remember which that one is. I think it's retention, isn't it? Cause the one over here is not.
Did you say retention?
Yeah, cause, no, that one will be drained, cause they're gonna put a cement block in and a pipe and it's gonna go down.
But it is a currently drain.
No, but it will once it's done.
It will be, yeah, it'll be a detention.
Yeah.
It'll be why that?
Detention.
Detention. Cause right now, it's a retention. Well, it's a wet one. Yeah, so.
All right, all right. Anything else?
Oh.
All right. Boy, now we got a new report from our new chamber director, Wynne Hint. Welcome.
Hi. My report is in your packet, I'm guessing. I wrote one.
Oh, if you gave it to Teresa, it's in the back.
Good deal. I don't have much to say, add to it, other than please go out. The Burger Battle is still going on. We have some great burgers out there and be sure to post to social media. We like to see all of the pictures coming over for that. That's it?
So anybody, any questions for our new chamber director?
How's it going? It's a lot. Good, it's a lot. It's, it's good, it's good.
Where's your office?
I'm in the sheriff's office.
Oh, that's right.
He's the sheriff in town.
Got it.
There may be a new sign.
Forget it.
Yeah, I just.
That's right. He, they defined that, but they were spending as much time here in Seattle, so.
It's small, but it's homey.
Yeah, absolutely. That's, yeah, excellent.
I'm there Mondays and Thursdays, one to five. Otherwise, I can be reached through email and so.
Okay, all right. Well, good enough. Thank you for joining us tonight. Welcome.
We're gonna win with win.
Win.
We're gonna win.
With win.
Hashtag.
Just FYI, she will be coming to the second meeting of every month for an update.
Oh, yeah, that's right. All right, city engineer report, the most exciting time of the evening, Michael.
Good evening, everyone. Pour's in your packet, a quick general engineering update, did review the site plan at the future get and go site. And provided comments to the developer on that, as well as a preliminary subdivision layout for the Windsor group. Really looking at the layout there, making sure that the proposed improvement streets, utilities, all of that really will jive as that area continues to develop. And making sure we're not blocking anything off and trying to grow efficiently and smartly. Moving on to project updates, once again, the only update is on the water resource recovery facility. As I believe I mentioned last time, the sewer is about two hundred feet east of Mickelson Road, which is, which is well, it'll stay for a while now that it's gotten colder and snow. And not being able to cross it, cross Mickelson Road and tear that up this winter, so. As it warms up, they'll look closer and keep going, but I wouldn't see much, much action going on there for the time being. Lift stations backfilled, getting, working on that, finishing that, structured up as well. And then Bryce Lake will be moving back to the Aramont structure to continue to work on the walls. Their goal is to do about two pours a week, as weather permits for twenty weeks to get those walls done, so.
Two pours a week for twenty weeks?
Twenty weeks, yeah, so those walls are sixteen, but I, they're, they're, the forms are, they got to create out there for the forms, cause they're a single piece, so they're.
How deep is that?
Six, the walls are sixteen.
How thick? You said sixteen, so how thick are they?
Eighteen?
Are they eighteen?
What concrete?
They can do about thirty feet, he said, at a time, the void stress cracking, so.
Okay.
And to follow on your concerns in last meeting regarding the pipes driving down the street and them parking their cars and the equipment on the roadway. The contractor was contacted and has been several times.
It's a mother nature too, gonna shut that down.
Yeah, regarding those issues, the contractor has been notified and, you know, requested and told it to not drive on the second street and park on the D O T right away and leave materials in that right away.
Don't do that again, otherwise we'll find another, you know, another subcontractor.
That's all in the report. If there are any questions?
See, we have a pay request.
Yeah, if there are any questions, a pay request number three to rest like construction on the water resource recovery facility in the amount of one million six hundred eighty-seven thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars. Additionally attached to that are invoices from Aramont for a lot of the equipment that they have stored, that they will be, you know, installing once the basin is, so.
Not really a question, not a comment. Big project, fixed project, this thing has been done. We had more, just my opinion. We had better updates about street projects in town than we do about their project. What I mean was, we had the link and we had, this is what's happening this week and whatnot, and so on and so forth. There'd be better projects that have had, you know, aerial views and live cams and and, and we had, when we picked Bryce Lake, we had their, you know, fancy spreadsheet that showed us where our costs were at and those were updated every week. We haven't got any of that with this project. It's been very black and white and lots of dollar signs. So just, I don't know if that's something that we're missing out on, or if that's something that we presumed we would get when we were going through that selection process, but it'd be, it'd be handy, nice to have some schedule, you know, like a schedule to reference and where our budget is on that project more frequently, just my opinion.
Because I believe a couple meetings, we like the, a couple photos of the, of the site, just something like that, just to see progress being made, you know.
And I assume we've talked about that at our meeting, you, you are getting a link right, a project website ready that we think.
That's why I never seen something like that, with something where we could go on to that.
Last Thursday we met and I saw you said it was gonna be up this week. So, we never heard that last.
Somebody asked me, what's the big cream, salt in the interstate? I'm like, that's that project guy. Somebody lives in my house.
So hopefully we'll get that link to the website and.
Jocelyn, she's been over in England.
A little disconnected now, wasn't her?
I'll make sure we get that website updated and additional information in the reports.
Yeah, appreciate it.
So I did, I did talk to Justin this week too, because I wanted to confirm, and it's in here in the paperwork that a lot of that material is setting in Lock and Key down in Manhattan, Kansas, so if we wanna make a road trip, we can.
Shotgun.
There we go. That's what I figured. I figured I'd have taken.
I'm fine in the back. We need to take the van.
Take our new van.
I haven't got confirmation of that yet.
I was gonna say, and I don't know if this is normal or not, but it would be nice to do like a un-hat tour out there, not while it's this cold and in a good time when it's not muddy.
Yeah.
I'd love to go out and.
I got a few pictures of when they're doing some of the stuff out there. I can send them to Teresa and she can just go.
Yeah, but I'd like to get out there with a hard hat. I mean, yeah, I wanna get with a hard hat and see it.
Been out there about five, six times or more, and I don't get on the pickup, so we don't need to have a hard hat or vest or gloves. And very much to see if I'm up there as big as.
Hard hats is fun though, yeah.
Well, I'm willing to wait till it's not ten degrees out and six foot of mud.
We stopped, when was that, September? I mean, the floor was poor.
Yeah.
Even just to walk through, like.
And there was nobody around, so we just jumped out of the car and looked in the, looked over the edge.
No rush.
You might have to deal with cold or the mud.
No, no rush.
No rush.
Fridays are usually the day because the contractors usually wrap up so that they're going, so you don't have the construction work going on around you. Something about it.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not looking to go out sweeping today, but.
You mentioned drone footage. They did do some, did you guys get that link? I thought I sent it out like a month ago or something?
I did watch it. Yep.
It was in, I think, one of my updates, so that, that was kind of cool.
That was absolute. We had, we had actually got a contract to go put a construction camera on a project on the you know, over there.
Foundation park?
Foundation park, founder's park, foundation park, you know, that's, that's kind of neat.
Okay, action on the pay request.
I maybe, I'm gonna scroll up here. I'm looking at all these pictures. Sorry, I got twenty pages here I'm going through. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the pay request right here. It is number three to Rice Lake Construction.
Any more discussion? If not, we'll vote, both.
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Boss Luger?
Yes.
All right.
Before I ever get, speed limit sign on thirty-eight pound in the town on the east side.
Fifty.
It's not there. It's gone.
Yeah, I've contacted. I've contacted D O T a few weeks ago and actually before that, they apparently don't have a fifty mile an hour speed limit sign, so it's in process of getting ordered. The state, that's a, so when I talked to them last, they signed it.
Picked up the old one out of the ditch?
Putting it up as soon as they get it, but yeah, I've been contacting them for over a month on that, so.
The one that said, commenting is up there.
Yep.
I was gonna look and see if we had one we could borrow.
All right, anything else, Michael?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Craig.
I guess I don't have any changes in mind, nothing to speak of anyway, so unless somebody has any questions for me.
Question reported on the payload or? That's being used to push on, what does that have for safety beacons and flashers and stuff like that on it?
It'll have the beacon above.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Back of beeper, stuff like that.
Back of beeper, all right. In the daylight, strange as it sounds, big as it is, it can just kind of, you know, you kind of don't see it. Or you see it, but you don't realize like how big it is. It's enormous and it takes up all of party, so.
I can.
And I wasn't looking at the flashy beacon at that point. I was looking at the blade, so.
I can, I mean, a lot of times lights are automatically on when you see the fire march, so the light should be on, but we can double check, make sure.
Sure, sure, yeah. Yeah, I don't know if the.
But the beacons aren't that, yeah, just kind of on, so.
Yeah.
Who has the switches on for them?
No worries. Sounds good. I figured there was something on there, but just Terry was just grinning. I'll back out, Terry. It'll be fine.
All right, any questions for Craig? Thanks for all your work, you and you guys over the weekend. I know I have stuff coming in on cold weather, but it appeared.
Holiday weekend too.
Yeah.
It usually is. I'm just gonna add one real quick thing that I seen on Hartford Avenue about this, snow gates. We do not have snow gates.
We all have them.
They only fit on one piece of equipment. That's a maintainer. We only have one maintainer.
It's harder to not comment. Really.
I was gonna try to figure out a way to put a piece of metal on the end of my blade with a string and pulley attachment.
The person that saw it, I just, that's, that's the one that was like, I don't know what she saw, but.
Just wanted to clarify that. We do not have any stored away anywhere, so.
The preferential treatment for certain taxpaying citizens of Hartford, that was a good one too.
Yeah. All right, thanks, Craig. Next up, Karen.
Yeah, my report's in the packet. No changes or nothing bad, so if someone has questions.
You notice that petitions need to be pulled, can be pulled to twenty-sixth?
You're going to Hawaii again?
How many petitions have been pulled?
Like, you're going to Disney.
Tell them.
That's the first thing.
Twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Yeah, and then they're due back in by the twenty-third of February, so. And as we know, we got one year and a two-year in Ward One, two-year in Ward Two, and a two-year in Ward Three.
Explain the one year again. I think we did that one year.
Mark was, nobody ran, so Mark was appointed last year, so.
For one year.
One year.
Appointments are only one year.
Yeah.
It's all you.
Yeah. I think we found a, we think we found the, somebody that's gonna pull a petition.
That's good for.
Ward One, for the one year, yeah.
Is the person in this room?
One for one, two for one.
On the, on the budget, I don't know if it's, or on the financials, I'd love to see, and maybe we don't need it till we do budget, but it'd be nice to see the budget and the actual for the last two or three years all at the same time.
Oh, last two or three. I say you do get that in your box under financials. You get a expense report and a revenue report that shows. Oh, that's two or three, I say you do get that in your box, under financials, you get a expense report and a revenue report that shows budget.
We get like a line graph, or something like.
I'd say, but it doesn't, it doesn't compare the last three years.
That, that's what I'm interested in, and it, like, where we finish the year, I think is what I never quite figure out, so like, I see what we budget, but what were our actual revenues and expenses compared to budget?
So what, at budget time? Yeah, I got a sheet that can go back five years, I can throw that in the box for you guys, so you can so, you know, you won't, we'll see where we ended up last year and then the year before that, and the year before that, so.
Yeah, and because I, I feel like we don't, or I didn't catch on last time, which is probably more the issue, talking about being new.
Yep, when I, my, my worksheets go back further than what you say, but so I can throw that in the box for you guys.
I like, you know, if we budgeted this much, where did we finish? And then, including what our revenues budgeted, where, what, where did our revenues finish?
It doesn't have the actual, it just has the actual, not the budget, but.
Yeah, I want to see the budget.
We'll see the budget versus the actual for the last three years. Okay, we can do that up here. We can do that and get something to use.
All right.
Whenever we're closed, I don't know, so does this mean December is closed out all the way then?
Yes, so the year should be closed out, yep, yep, so we can work on that.
Okay.
Don't rush.
Anything else for Karen? Nope, Teresa.
Um, my report's in there, too, I don't have a lot of updates. Um, I met last week with a, an IT service, and I've got three meetings this week with some more IT services, so um, people, I like said, I sent out to eleven different companies for proposals, I've probably got six that are contacting me and getting more information, so I hope to have, you know, a few proposals in that we can compare and look at, those are due at the end of this month. I'm gonna get them in, I'll kind of compare them and make sure everybody's apples to apples, and then hope to have a recommendation for you guys to look at the top two or three or whatever by mid-February, so we can.
I think when we do that, it would be helpful to me to know from you guys, like, what are the most important things to you?
Right, and, and when they call, I do have a list, these are the things, their current IT is, you know, offsite backup, you know, get the Windows three sixty-five, you know, make sure we have firewall, that we get the, kind of those things. Um, make sure they can give you equipment for us and get, you know, like, we need a new computer and get it set up, be able to yeah, kind of, what a current IT is doing, those are the things that we need done, so, yeah, that's what I'm kind of looking at, too, is what's comparable, so, hopefully have, like I said, by the end of the month, when I get those in, I can hopefully get a breakdown between all the people that submit, and so we can kind of compare them all, apple to apples, kind of, so, still working on that. Um, transit buses, as you mentioned, is, I've sent it all over to Rocks, um, they're basically getting all the paperwork through the state or whatnot. I don't have an ETA on delivery date, so once they get that, I'll let you know, but, um, everybody's aware of it, so we're moving forward with that purchase. And then, um, I put a little note in there about the employee manual, I got it sent to me today, this morning, so, um, I will, over the next week or two, kind of compare that to our existing one, see, you know, make sure they've incorporated everything we have existing and see what they've added, so I can present that to you guys and let you know where we sit with that, hopefully have that by, not the first meeting, the February second meeting, so we can move forward with that. And that's all I've got for updates as well.
All right, I see you have one action item under yours.
Yep, yep, so the action I have is that we have a City Management Association, it's through the South Dakota Municipal League, they are having a training session here in February. It's gonna be afternoon and the morning training session, after the Brig Dinner Legislative Session. Um, so, I went to it last year, it's out in Pear, I'd like to attend this year as well. It's, I said, they didn't, not, it's, at the time of this, they don't have an agenda, so I don't also know what specifically they're going to go over, but um, usually it's all pretty good information, and like I said, it's always a good meeting with the other managers to go over current issues and whatnot, so. I'd like permission to attend that.
I make a motion to, for Teresa to attend South Dakota City Management Association training.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, Wasso, Mattson, Keel.
Yes.
Bowing. All right, anything else, Teresa?
That's all I have.
All right, new business, under new business, we have first item, review approved engagement letter for twenty-twenty-three annual report for ELO CPAs and advisors.
Motion to approve engagement letter for the twenty-twenty-three annual report as requested.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, Bowing.
Yep.
Keel.
Yes.
Mattson. Wasso. Second up is review approved engagement letter for the twenty-twenty-two audit, and by ELO.
Should that be twenty-twenty-three?
Should one be twenty-four and one be twenty-three?
No, they're both twenty-three.
They're both twenty-three.
They're looking at our books of last year.
So the agenda's wrong.
The agenda's wrong, the report's right, it's lost, and, yeah, I looked over it so close yesterday.
That's one we keep track of, on Teresa's, on Teresa's.
I know, and I thought.
Teresa had one.
I kind of went through, first time of the year.
First time of the year, okay, that should say twenty-three.
Twenty-three, yeah, because they're both looking over our books from last year.
The twenty-twenty-three engagement letter for the audit, all right? Then we have a motion moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll vote, Bowing.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Wasso. Okay, next up, we're going to discuss pickleball court sponsorship. A while back, we decided we're gonna put pickleball courts in, I reached out to Golden West to see if they'd be interested in sponsoring, and they are, and the reason this is on the agenda, we want to have some discussion about the terms of that sponsorship. Teresa's laid out some information for you in the packet, if you had a chance to review that.
So it's for a period of ten years, and it's twenty-five thousand dollars?
That's what they're recommending.
That's a recommendation, Golden West would like it perpetual.
That's pretty cheap advertising.
I would say, even with the ten years, that's pretty cheap advertising, yes, perpetual would be crazy, but.
And we told them we were going to discuss this and we'd get back to them with the final terms of what this was going to.
What's the cost of the pickleball court?
It's like thirty grand we budgeted, right?
We budgeted, yeah, thirty-five.
Yeah, that's right.
When we talked to Golden West, we figured we'd, Craig'd come up with no, we figured we'd be doing it for twenty-five thousand, so that is what we pitched to Golden West. Um, the mayor, myself, and me, too, aren't you? Um, to meet with Craig, also the representative.
So is this for two or four?
This will be two courts, we have enough room to do basically eight courts there.
Eight courts total.
Eight courts total.
Wow, that'd be a little much.
Two, yeah.
You have no idea.
You have no idea.
That's a lot of pickleball, even for her.
Oh, man, it is.
And, and that's just the area we have, I'm not saying we have to put in eight courts, both, we're, you know, starting with the two courts, and then we can gauge how much we use.
Perpetually, I'll take the next.
We just have that much area.
I, I, I'd be even four, I think, but eight seems a little excessive.
So what do you guys think, what do you, what do you want us, how would you like to move forward and what should we propose to Golden West?
I'd actually like to see the Park and Rec Board weigh in on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why, I mean, I guess I'm kind of confused here because the Park and Rec Board is leading us.
Right, and they were involved with this, they were standing in on.
They were, they were at the meeting, too, yes.
Sean, I just stepped out of my, out of my comfort zone and took the ball and went and asked Golden West, okay, that's how we got to this point. Gee, Wes.
I mean, that's a bargain, you went around the process.
I did, I maybe stepped out of line.
I mean, like I said, we did put budget for two courts, um, that was off the recommendation of the Park and Rec Board. The Park and Rec Board has not discussed the terms, I, I would say they would probably feel that would be more of a council decision, as far as, but we can have them weigh in.
Yeah, I mean, it's advertising.
We can sure have them weigh in and decide, and then decide the first meeting.
I just want to make sure, like, if the intention is for them to cover the court or the cost, or the cost of the courts, that twenty-five is enough.
I think that's what that twenty-five thousand is for.
Like perpetually, then, from, like, any time, the logo needs to be redone, that's almost.
That's one thing I just can bring up, we should see how long the surfacing is gonna last, so, you know, if it's a ten-year court, then, you know, ten years, I think they should throw in some more.
Five years.
You know, if it's five years, you know, it'd be nice to know, you know, what they think the surfacing is gonna last.
So do we want to have the Park and Rec Board talk about this at their meeting at the end of the month and then come back in February?
And, and, well, by then we can figure out how long it lasts, I mean, kind of, it's gonna be a praise for them.
Yeah, so since it's an agenda, I think we need action on that.
Table.
Oh, we said we were just discussing, so I don't know that we were really. This is, yeah, they made a recommendation, but this was really a discussion, because this is the first time it's kind of came to you guys. I think you knew I had talked with them, and that was about it.
Yeah, I think clarification on.
Yep.
Really careful what they ask, because pretty soon we have big billboards that don't have any lights on.
Well, that's a big question, are there lights there?
But you know what, I mean, sometimes we get really narrow, we get really narrow focus.
Right.
And I don't, having those folks involved with this.
Are there gonna be benches there, I mean, what else are we gonna get asked for next year when we put the courts up? Like, I think a plan for that park would be, or that area of the park would be nice, instead of just throwing a couple of pickleboards.
Is that something I, she can help out with, or?
For free?
I would say, for course.
I'm just throwing out a question, I'm not frigging.
So, like, this words complex, we're pretty much putting that together ourselves, packaged to bring back to you guys, we're discussing that next meeting, but in that package deal, we are including picnic tables and drinking fountains and shade shelters, all that together, so that's all going before the board next meeting, I mean, that's something that you could talk about in the same situation.
You might need to spend that money for other things in that area, because you, you know you can't just put the pickleball, there's gotta be like benches. And then I'll guarantee you people are gonna want lights, so I think we kind of have to, like, whatever we need, we're lobbying out if we're doing lights.
Way to go, Travis.
They're gonna need a shade shelter, are the restrooms good enough?
Okay, that's, that's whatever.
Michael will never make partner if he approves, you know.
Given us reason. All right, Craig, you want to get some information, we'll discuss this with the Park Board at the end of the month.
My commentary should not be construed to not being supportive of this.
No, I think it's very, I think you're bringing some very, very good points to the table.
And I will take some of the blame that this is where this far, because I just took a shot and called Golden West to see if they'd be interested in sponsoring.
Something happened.
Yeah, I think it looks great.
No, no hate, Arden, no hate.
You know, I'm just trying to do my small part.
When you land somewhere, you do a pool for your pool room, and then I'll be like.
Yeah, that may be a while, okay, so we know where we're going with that, next up, Mary Oak, may oral appointment, speaking of Park and Rec Board. And I would like the council's approval to appoint Wendy Keel as a member of the Park and Rec Board for a three-year term. She has agreed to say yes.
You need a motion on this?
Yes.
I make a motion to appoint Wendy Keel to the Park and Rec Board.
Second.
Any discussion? Or vote, Wasso.
Yes.
Mattson. Keel, and you can abstain, because there's only three, four of us here.
You can't, because if you abstain.
She doesn't, not want to spend any money, though, so can he, I mean, can he vote on this one?
He can only vote on ties.
I don't think so, yes.
Bowing.
Yes.
I thought about that today.
It's not that bad, she'll be okay.
It's not a paid position.
I don't see how there's any conflict in that.
No, I said it's not.
It's not an unpaid.
Yeah.
We don't need a law.
No, you should have stopped there. All right, we need a motion to go into executive session for personnel and economic development.
I make, yep, so moved.
Second, all in favor? That's all right, that's why I get the bigger bucks. All right, do we have any motions from the council?
I make a motion to recommend a twenty-twenty-four payroll increases for COLA for full-time employees, the COLA for part-time employ, employees, the merit increase. So the COLA for full-time employees.
One dollar.
One dollar.
Per hour.
Per hour, the COLA for part-time employees is sixty-eight cents per hour.
Yep.
In addition, I also make, or I also, uh, recommend a merit increase for Teresa Seidel at two-point-two-five percent, Paul Clark at one-point-seven-five percent, Jennifer Stengland at one-point-seven-five percent, Craig Wagner at two-point-two-five percent, Karen Wilbur at two-point-two-five percent, Amy Farr at one-point-five percent, Rhonda Kupta at two percent, Kyle Christensen at two percent, Neil Haneish at two percent, Jesse O'Kane at two percent, James Olson at two percent, Terry Hagan at two percent.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, Bowing.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Wasso.
Yes.
That is approved, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some of them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.